Good evening, I would like to open up the meeting of December tenth to two thousand fourteen. Welcome to everybody, tonight is our budget hearing, well, our first presentation of the budget, I should put it that way. And so we're glad to see so many members of the staff and administration here. We will start with a roll call, and we tonight, Kim, have two members are not present, Mr. Bajowk, who's because of work, and Mrs. Carroll are not able to attend tonight. Otherwise, everybody is here. Our next item of business would be superintendent's introduction of the items for warrants, et cetera.
Yes, there are eight items for consideration on the consent agenda this evening. They include approval of minutes from your November twelfth, two thousand fourteen regular session meeting, approval of field trip to New York City, this is a high school field trip on April seventh of two thousand fifteen, acceptance of, actually, I should say there's nine items, acceptance of two donations, one from the Wilmington School Business Partnership, and one from the Wilmington Education Foundation, and then there are five different sets of warrants as well.
Okay. I think what we'll do, first of all, we'll approve, could I ask you, did, were you all set with that field trip?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We'll do, approve, I'll entertain a motion to approve item one, item two, warrants four, under four, six, and eight. Mr. Mullis.
Um, excuse me.
Yes.
Can we not conclude warrant number eight?
Oh, okay. Food service?
Um, I've got, oh, you know something, I don't have an updated agenda, I'm sorry.
Okay, wait a second, let me start again.
Oh, is this it?
You're talking, are you talking about the grants for number eight?
For items for approval?
What's she looking at?
The, the agenda.
Oh, it's number seven on this paper.
I'm sorry, forgive me.
Yeah, no, that's all right.
Forgive me.
That's right. This is getting more and more complicated, we're gonna have to really come up with, we'll have to think this over, okay. The numbers I mentioned, one, two, four, six, and eight, everybody should be able to vote on, so that's why I took those first. And it's on this page, not the one that's stapled to our, stapled to our packet, okay?
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mullis?
Ready?
Yes?
Make a motion to approve items one, two, and warrants four, six, and eight.
Eight, we have a second.
I can't put six.
CB?
You want to circle breakers?
Oh, sorry, we'll just take out six. We're taking out six, Kim.
I apologize, I'm so high maintenance.
Should I make another motion, or?
One, two.
No, we'll just take out six.
Okay. Make a motion to take out six from the motion I just made.
And, do we have a second, Mrs. Brusad? Okay, all those in favor? Five in favor, so unanimous. Okay, um, our next one would be warrant, payroll warrant, well, entertain a motion for that. Mrs. Bonish.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrant payroll, eleven nineteen and twelve three.
Do we have a second, Mrs. Burns? Okay, all those in favor? Four in favor, one abstain, Mrs. Kane. Okay, and warrants number seven for sped warrants.
Six and seven.
Number six and seven, thank you.
I'll make a.
Mrs. Brusad?
I'll make a motion to approve warrants listed under six and warrants listed under seven.
Thank you, and a second, Mrs. Bonish. Okay, all those in favor? Okay, four in favor, one abstain, Kim, Mrs. Burns. And the other two we have, I'm taking them separately because they're very generous donations, very generous donations, and so the first one will be the Wilmington Educational Foundation. I move to accept the Wilmington Educational Foundation donation in the amount of nine thousand five hundred ninety-seven dollars and forty-three cents, that goes directly to our teaching staff. Mrs. Burns?
I make a motion to accept the school business, excuse me, the Wilmington Education Foundation donation of nine thousand five hundred ninety-seven dollars and forty-three cents.
Thank you, a second, Mrs. Brusad? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, that one's unanimous, Kim, and the other one is the School Business Partnership Grant donation. We'd move to accept the School Business Partnership donation provided in the form of teacher grants in the amount of two thousand seven hundred twenty-four dollars and seventy cents. Mrs. Bonish?
I'll make a motion to approve the acceptance of the School Business Partnership Grant of twenty-seven hundred twenty-four dollars and seventy cents.
Okay, and a second, Mr. Mullis? All those in favor? That's unanimous, Kim. Okay, thank you very much. Let's see. Next, we have our student representatives' report. Emma and Stephen, thank you so much for coming tonight, and all your former teachers are not here to watch you in action, but we're all very proud of you that you sit in those seats and you're able to share with us what's happening at the high school.
Thank you. So, the Wildcat Band will be traveling to Orlando, Florida tomorrow to march in the Christmas Parade in Disney's Magic Kingdom. The band is leaving tomorrow morning and returning Sunday night.
The WHS Annual Deca Dance will be on Friday, December twelfth, and it's hosted by club members of Deca, and the WHS Band and Choral Concert will be on Thursday, December eighteenth, at seven P.M. in the high school auditorium.
Excellent. Very nice. And last month, when we had the different plays at the middle school and the, I do indoor activities, I didn't do sports, I'm sorry, but the play here at the high school, absolutely, we have such talented children, I shouldn't even call them children, we have such talented students, that if, if they come up again at the other, in the second half of the year, and you have a chance at all to go and see what they're doing, it's, it was outstanding, both of them were outstanding. Yeah, we had a really good time, thank you. All right, thank you so much. Thank you for coming. All right, our next item of business is the superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Kane, so there are a few things I wanted to report out to you. First of all, I wanted to let the committee know that Wilmington Middle School has nominated Michael Fiorenza as the eighth grade ambassador for Project Three Fifty-One, if you're not familiar with Project Three Fifty-One, it's basically a program that celebrates and young peoples, young people as a force for positive change and helps them to build leadership skills, engage in enrichment activity, and build friendships. There's actually, it's actually a year-long commitment, a calendar year commitment, and it kicks off with Service Day at the State House on Martin Luther King Day, and there are two other service days, one in the spring and one in the fall, where the first one is, is, in the spring is a spring greening event, and the second one is, in the fall is food bank service to food banks. They also have a Leadership Day as well, that they do leadership development, and Mr. Olson has written about Michael stating that he's an excellent student who consistently works hard and produces excellent grades, he has a conscientious work ethic combined with a genuine intuitiveness and interest in learning that fosters a well-rounded education, and Mike shared with us also that he's very happy to be nominated for Project Three Fifty-One. He states, "I'm very proud of myself, I think it will be a great experience for me, I will become a better leader, become more confident in myself, and give back to the community, all the while I can make some new friends." So we congratulate Mr. Fiorenza on that accomplishment, happy to have him represent Wilmington Public Schools and Wilmington Middle School. I also wanted to just update you on a couple of events that had happened, and I know that Mrs. Kane mentioned the two plays, the, Our Town, as well as Hello Dolly, the middle school and high school plays, and they were absolutely phenomenal, and I love this time of year, this is when all of our holiday concerts happen, and I have the ability to actually attend the High School Strings Concert, and I know that Dr. Burnham attended the Middle School Strings Concert, all sorts of concerts coming up, and I know the students announced the one that's coming up next week as well, so, the Band and Chorus Event. Also, just to let folks know, I know you're aware too, but just sort of a congratulations and a shout out to the staff at both the Shawshin School and the North School, they both had some interesting events happen, there was a fire alarm at the Shawshin School yesterday that they had to evacuate the building under less than ideal weather conditions, and they did such a nice job with, with the children, so we thank them for that. In the North, they had a tractor trailer hit of tel, a pole, power pole, out in front of the school, and they lost power, and those teachers did a fantastic job as well, these are not things that we necessarily drill for, but their instincts kicked in, and they knew exactly how to keep the kids safe and keep them calm, and they did a great job, so I just thank them for their commitment and service to our children.
Good, thank you. All right, our next item of business would be the new business.
Yes, the first item on the agenda is the elementary math program presentation, and just by way of background before I introduce our presenters to you, if you recall, we presented a capital improvement plan to you at one of the last meetings, and on that capital plan was an expense in the amount of a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars and change, and that is to fund the purchase of a new elementary math program, it's called the Envision Math Program. Here to present to you tonight on that program are Assistant Superintendent Kate Burnham, as well as our elementary math specialist, Lisa Ippolito. We also have in attendance all of the principals from the elementary schools, as well as many of our staff here who are actually piloting the Envision Math Program this year at all grade levels from K all the way up to five, and they can certainly share some of their insights about the program and how it's worked for them this year as well. So I thank all the staff for coming out on, on a school night and joining us, but we do appreciate that you're willing to share your perspective, so thank you for that. And without further ado, I think we might wanna shift and turn it over to Dr. Burnham and the principal, Mrs. Ippolito.
Before we begin the presentation, I just want to provide some information that might be helpful in clarifying. The new Massachusetts math and ELA frameworks were adopted in two thousand eleven. Those frameworks, the standards, do incorporate the Common Core standards. However, Massachusetts added additional standards to those Common Core standards in both math and ELA. Since the adoption, this district began the work of creating a curriculum aligned to those standards. That work's been ongoing for the last three years, largely under the direction of our math specialist at the elementary level, in combination with the members of the elementary math vertical team and the kindergarten math vertical team. Many of the members are here tonight, if, if the members of the vertical team are here tonight, could you stand? I want to acknowledge the hard work that was provided for, for the district by all of these teachers, under the leadership of Lisa Ippolito and before her, Terri Buscemi. Thank you all.
We can't hear you, we can't hear anything.
If you don't have microphones, just so you know, for audio, these are microphones for the table, but we'll ask folks to just speak up a little bit as they're presenting.
The folks that were just standing were the, the teachers of the elementary math vertical team that helped develop the district's new math curriculum.
Katie, maybe if you and Lisa wanted to sit at the end of the line.
It doesn't go that far.
Sorry.
So, with that said, this work has been underway for quite some time. The problem is, is that the, the state adopted these standards, but the publishers needed time to develop textbooks to support the newly adopted standards. They were not ready with materials upon adoption, so we've been waiting and looking at materials to, to suit our needs and be aligned with the program that we developed and the standards that were adopted by the state. So I'll turn it over now to Mrs. Ippolito, so that she can explain how this adoption program has, has worked for us thus far.
Great. First of all, thank you for having me tonight to present to you about the Envisions Program. So first, we're gonna start with the criteria for Wilmington Public Schools. So we were looking for a program, as Dr. Burnham had said, that aligned to the two thousand eleven Massachusetts curriculum frameworks, and that provided a shift in teaching and learning, and those shifts are listed on the PowerPoint, so we have a shift in focus, which ultimately means critical areas of instruction at every grade level. We're looking for a program that had the shift with coherence, and that means a vertical alignment and connections of the standards from grade to grade, clarity, very clear emphasis on the standards with nothing additional added that didn't belong within a grade level, and also, some, some say most importantly, rigor. And rigor relates to conceptual understanding of why do you solve a problem the way that you do, procedural understanding and fact fluency, as well as application of skills. Rigor also implies the use of the math practices, which are also in addition to the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks, so we're looking for a program that did that seamlessly, as well as also a very important to us, staff, student, and parent-friendly program. So in, as Dr. Burnham had talked about, in two thousand eleven, the curriculum was released, and Wilmington Public School teachers engaged in work around the standards. We spent two years unpacking the standards and aligning them to the program that we had at the time, which is Math Trailblazers. We were researching quality options and trying to find a program that met all the criteria that I mentioned before, and the program that we found that had all those pieces was the Envisions Program. So, we're gonna talk now about why the Envisions Program, and we're gonna start with content standard alignment. So, we found the program to be very comprehensive, it had everything the teacher, all the tools that teachers need to instruct their students, it has the assessments, it has interventions, has clear content, high-quality conceptual problems, and emphasis on proper rigor. The domains, clusters, and standards, and math practices emphasized in each lesson. It also follows a best-practice math instruction block, meaning that in a math block, you like to see the lesson start off in a guided way, where it's, where teachers engage students in making connections with the objective in front of them. Then you'd like the lesson to move into an independent practice, and at that time, teach, children are able to demonstrate their knowledge of the skills, and also gives teachers time to focus on those students who maybe are struggling with those particular standards. Then the program moves to a quick assessment, which gives solid data for educational planning for individual students, and then goes into differentiation with, like centers, for example. The other piece of this program was the visual bridge. Every single lesson starts with a visual bridge, and the visual bridge really focuses on the reasoning and the problem-solving step by step, and it also comes in a cute little video that the students watch prior to engaging in the activity, and it helps bridge the students' understanding of concepts, and gradually, it also supports the growth developmentally of students to move from the concrete into the representational stage into more abstract thinking. Another piece of the program related to standard alignment that we found, it has accurate and consistent math vocabulary. So, in our previous program, for example, they used like skinnies and bits to represent ones and tens, and that language became very confusing when they moved into the middle school and up into the high school, because it was like a shift in their knowledge. So, that's one piece of the program that we liked, but also the vocabulary, because we're looking at this pilot from a pre-K to a fifth grade perspective, the vocabulary scaffolds through the grades, so it just builds and grows and becomes used over and over again and billed upon. It also utilizes understanding by design, and that's essentially, you take a focus and you work backwards using habits of mind to say, what does a student need to do in order to access this objective? Also teaches students multiple strategies to solve, provides tiered instruction, which is, just supports our response intervention initiative that we already have occurring in the district. It has project, it's called Math Project, which is STEM-related, so it shows a lot of cross-curricular activities embedded in the math. Hands-on, minds-on, which is interactive tasks, it's like project-based learning, and then a section in each topic called Go Digital, where students manipulate, math manipulatives, and use technology to solve in the area of math. Another important piece for us was following the math progressions, and so what you see there on the right-hand side is an actual screenshot of one of the topic books, where the middle column is, are the standards that are being taught in this particular unit, and then to the left are the standards that correlate, that build, are foundational to the standards that are going to be taught, and then in the right-hand column, all the way to the right, are the standards that the students will work towards in another lesson. You can't really see from here, well, I can't really see from here, but the little blue circles indicate the topics in which the standards are taught. So this is really helpful, because our teachers have already been working really hard in supporting all learners, so if you have a child who's struggling with the standards that you're currently teaching, where do you go? Where's the foundation? Where do you have to go back to to support them, to bring them forward? And at the same token, looking at those standards and you have a student who's a high achiever, before you even taught a lesson, what are you going to do for them to support them and also enrich them and move them forward? So, that was an important piece for us. This next document is Zimber wire diagram, and that actually, believe it or not, it are all the standards vertically aligned, and that's only K through five. This, this document actually goes K through eight, and Dr. Burnham and I worked with this document quite a bit over the last couple of years, because our focus really is supporting all learners and finding out those skills that are foundational for their learning, so that they can become the best mathematicians that they can be. So this was actually kind of a base for all the work that we did, and so we were happy to see that on the previous screen, that this program also embedded those same goals. Differentiation is always important to us, this program supports all kinds of learners from advanced, it has special programming for our ELL population and our special needs students. Also, it provides leveled homework and centers, so teachers are able to support all learners, and the important piece about the differentiation is that it's differentiated, but the students are still working within the standard of that topic, so it's not creating this gap of knowledge. And it also has reteach on-level and advanced homework and center pages. And again, it follows our RTI Response Intervention in our classroom, so tier one is the ongoing, occurs with most or all students, there are guided lessons, and that's where you prevent any misconceptions, because studies have shown that a lot of math difficulty stems from misconceptions that children have, and this program actually has a section called Math Background, where it talks about potential misconceptions, so teachers can have that in their mind as they're instructing. Then tier two is Strategic Intervention, and that's done in a small group, and it's focused work on the standard, and then tier three is your most intensive, it's focused on the foundational skills, supporting kids, so that then we can bridge them forward. It also has an excellent home and family piece, there's an online portal for families, and it gives an exact replica of the student text on the online portal. Teachers are able to give assignments through the portal, and parents can see the work. It has the vocabulary cards, it has videos, as this shift has happened, it's created some gaps in, you know, not just in a learning curve for teachers, but also parents, you know, comment to, well, I don't understand what they're doing with this math, but it has videos embedded, that actually teaches parents as well what the expectation is for the student on an activity. Parents also receive instant data when we, we've just begun using the online testing portal, but it gives real-time data, and then it has a selection of games at various levels. Okay, so the pilot right now in Wilmington Public Schools, we have undergone this pilot at no cost to Wilmington Public Schools, the publisher's been extremely generous with us in giving us all the pieces of the program, so that we're making an educated decision. The pilot involves one pre-K teacher, four kindergarten teachers, and then two teachers at grades one through five, meaning one teacher at the Shawshin, one teacher mirrored at the Woburn Street School, so we're trying to take everyone into account. We're also using pieces of this program with our fourth and fifth grade special needs students to support them around their educational goals, and the pilot teachers, in general sense, were volunteers from the math vertical team.
And I'd like to take a minute to ask all of the pilot teachers that are here tonight to stand up. Thank you.
Our favorite, professional development. So, our pilot teachers had their first training in June two thousand fourteen, it was a six-hour day, where the publisher sent their trainer and worked with us, and that was fantastic, so we could start our summer raring to go for September. But we also added a day in August, where we got together and continued with our training. Additional training days with the publisher is in November, we actually had it all day today, and then another one in February, and then additional support through our regular meetings with me, September, October, January, March, April, May, and June. So together collectively, we've been coming up with, like, how can we make this transition, hopefully if we move forward with the program, for the teachers who are not piloting next year? So we've put all, already have put a lot of hard work into supporting that. We had a parent informational night just for the pilot parents in October, and that was to introduce the parents to the online portal and the pieces of the program, and demonstrate where the newsletters were, the glossary, the practice pages, the videos, and each parent who attended that night received a folder, and in the folder had a how-to guide, step-by-step instructions, as well as a letter that had their child's username and password, so they could access the program sooner rather than later. In terms of feedback, the pilot teachers are excited about the program, because it supports the shifts in teaching and learning, they love the homeschool connection, it helps teachers to meet the diverse needs of students and support the differentiated instruction. Students have stated that they didn't like math before, but they like it now, because they can do math, and that was interesting. I've been invited into the pilot room, so I've been in most of the rooms to observe an entire lesson, because it's, you know, important to me to have a full view, and a lot of the students know me, so they would walk up to me and say, "Oh, Mrs. Ippolito, I didn't like math before, but I can do math now," and it was just like so joyous, and it was like first graders, and it was fourth graders, and it was just so great to see that. Parents largely support the program, stating that their children are learning the skills they need to be successful, and they are enthusiastic about math. Parents love the e-resources and instant feedback. So those words came from emails sent to me by parents. Some parents' concerns were expressed, those concerns were more focused on the appropriateness of the math standards. A parent information night is going to be held next Tuesday night to talk about the actual Common Core math. Other districts that I reached out to, to get feedback from, that are utilizing the program successfully, include Belmont, Hawkington, Burlington, Melrose. If Wilmington Public Schools moves forward with the adoption, there will be a training held this year for all teachers on a CIT day through the publisher. This summer, I plan on running a series of workshops assisted by some of the pilot teachers to offer additional training this summer, and next year, twelve hours of additional professional development will be scheduled. And also, Dr. Burnham and I came up with an idea about having little parent support sessions, like little coffees, where parents could come, and we could sit with them and support any questions that they might have.
Because essentially, we are teaching two generations, the new math standards. Parents need to become familiar with how we're approaching instruction to deliver the new, the new curriculum.
So, in summary, the current materials, the Math Trailblazers Program, they really have been maximized and do not provide seamless support of instruction. We've worked really, really hard to try our best, but it's just at this time, not as seamless, obviously, as, as this program that we're piloting. We feel implementation of a pre-K five research-based program will support coherence and diverse learning needs of our students for seven grades and six buildings. This program was rewritten to reflect the shift in teaching, it's not just stamped with a seal saying that it's aligned, it truly is, and many of the other programs that we looked at did not even come close to providing the same type of teaching and learning experiences. So, basically, at this time, you know, we would highly recommend an adoption for the fifteen, sixteen school year. Thank you.
Additionally, you receive folders this evening that provides a summary, an executive summary of the full research that was done by Pearson for this product. You have a two-page summary of how this product compares with others, as well as an overview of the program in relation to the Common Core standards. in relation to the Common Core standards.
What I'd like to do is get the, oh, thank you. I think before we see if the school committee talks, I'd like to, if you don't mind, if anyone in the audience, I don't know if there are parents here too, but I'd really like to start with the teachers. If there's anything you wanted to add to this. We really, we, in the end, we are, I should say, from right from the beginning, we are certainly not against this program. But it was, took us by surprise in the way we were unaware that it had gotten to this point. And we do have an obligation to support the program or decide not to support the program. And we definitely are supportive of a math program, but we do have some questions as a school committee. So I just wanted to see if anybody would like to make any comments about it to help us in our decision about this being the program. You don't have to, but if anyone had anything, yes?
Hi. My name is Sally Lojek. I have been teaching math, fifth grade, for, I think this is my 16th year. I have also been lucky enough, math is my passion, I love math. And except for three years, I've always been able to teach two math classes because I share it with colleagues. I was on the leadership team for Math Trailblazers, you know, at its inception. I've been part of the vertical team since the vertical team, you know, started. And I am one of the pilot teachers. The feedback that, we just had conferences, and so I have 41 children that are involved in this pilot, and I have had nothing but positive feedback, or, you know, maybe not any, just neutral feedback. I have had no negative feedback. As Lisa said, I have parents who say, my child actually say, ma, I got math. Or this is the first time my child hasn't balked at doing homework. I could reiterate what Lisa said as far as it being teacher-friendly. It's, the rigor in it is, it amazes me every day what my children can do. Just in one year, this year and last year, what, how they're writing about math, how they're using, how they can model math, or do different, show math in different ways, whether it's with a bar diagram or an array, or an area model. All these things were not part of my teaching last year. But I think the thing that I love the most is that I'm seeing kids who, at the end of 90 minutes, will say, math is over already? I mean, they truly say that. I've been a resident of Wilmington for 29 years, again, teaching, you know, going on my 16th year, and it is fabulous. It's all-inclusive, it's strong. I feel like it's exactly what the children of Wilmington need. And so, from the bottom of my heart, I'm asking you to support the program. It truly is that good. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Because I'm very interested as to what, and I would welcome any other teachers to share their perspective as well. What other programs have you seen? And because I do have to say, I've looked into, there's a ton of new programs to meet the Common Core standards out there. I think, and I'll speak for myself, I don't want to speak for my colleagues. I personally have, it's, I mean, the need for it is, it's unarguable. There is a need. My question is, is, I think my concerns lie is that I want to make sure that this curriculum is the best and will allow you, as teachers, you know, the first line of teaching to our students, the ability to grow, especially if the standards do start changing, because some of the standards have yet to be created, such as that science piece and things like that. I know it's a math piece, but the STEM core, and I want to know, have you had any experience with any other similar products that are now, that are now coming out? I have some concerns with the company who produces this, and it may be, you know, it may be unwarranted. I do have some concerns with regards to the company who produces this particular curriculum. I have no problem if this is what fits Wilmington the best, but I do have that reservation. And I want to make sure it is a curriculum that will allow teachers to, give them the firm foundation that is much needed, but can also grow from that in supporting the standards as they may change. And do you have any experience with any previous programs?
I don't have any experience with the newer products. So like I said, you know, Math Trailblazers, I am very familiar with. That no longer fits our needs. The one thing I will say is that this company, the Envisions program that we're using, is the 2015 program. So we're already using, we're using a program that is not out. So, you know, it's not outdated yet. Do you know what I mean?
No, I know that, but it's, as I just heard that, you know, the standards were adopted prior to any curriculum being created. So I'm sure all those, there's a lot of new products out there, and I just, you know.
And again, I just want to reiterate that there's a distinction that needs to be made between a curriculum, we have an aligned curriculum that we developed and are using resources available from Trailblazers, which do not have the math practices involved, do not meet the level of rigor that we need to have, available materials from resources available online, as well as other workbook-type resources that we have gone out looking for. The curriculum, we have written an aligned curriculum, and we feel that this product best suits
What we, what you've written?
The curriculum that we have written with all of the component parts of the curriculum that we put together, plus a few that we intended to build ourselves.
Oh, okay.
So this has everything that we designed in our own curriculum.
Just to add to that, Dr. Burnham, where we're coming from, in a sense, is the fact that, as you said, with Trailblazers, Trailblazers was brought to us, and we were told this is going to be it, and this is a big thing. And I'm not sure that Trailblazers was such a great idea. And over the years, and so we want to make sure that three years from now, we don't find out that we leaped into something and it really wasn't such a great idea. So I think that's why we're like, once burned, twice, you know, but, okay, good. Let this teacher's talk.
Actually, my name is Lisa Murphy, and I'm a kindergarten teacher. And speaking from the Early Childhood Program, I love teaching kindergarten. I've been teaching for about 20 years. I have never taught so much math in these first 60, 70 days of teaching since I've taught. I've never had. I have kindergartners who are giving me five and showing me what's two more. The vocabulary that they're using is mind-boggling, and they're understanding it. They're using rows, they're using columns, and that was day 10 of the kindergarten program. They're working with 10 frames, and I heard today through our training that these 10 frames go through the whole entire fifth grade. They can look at a 10 frame, say, oh yeah, Mrs. Murphy, that has 10 in it. If I have five, oh, that's five. And they were using two 10 frames today to show me 10. The kid-friendly user of it too, and I'm in an inclusion room, so I also have the special ed children in my room, it's amazing. There's manipulatives the kids are using, the cute video, as we mentioned before, they're using it. It is, it's just the right thing. I've had the Math Trailblazers, I've been with Mrs. Ippolito, tearing that binder apart, copying things. We spent many, many hours trying to bring that up to what it could. It didn't do it, and it hasn't done it. I mean, I've been at Wilmington for the last seven years, and it, I've never taught so much math in kindergarten. I'm speaking purely for the early childhood buildings. There was never nothing to support these kindergartners. This has just been amazing. Conferences, again, as Mrs. Lojek said, I didn't have one parent who was like, oh, this math program. The kids look forward to math. They're enjoying it. And it's the pieces of the centers and all the different pieces it had. It's just supporting every learner, from my enrichment kids until my inclusion kids. And I have some very severe children in my class this year, and they're enjoying it, and they're learning math also at their pace. So it's just been fabulous. And I've thanked Mrs. Ippolito for the work she's done, because she's done a lot of work with it and supported it and researched it to find what we needed. And the training she's supported us in giving us this year has been amazing. And I would welcome anybody, if you're welcome, to come into our classroom and to see the program work. Because I know Mrs. Delai has been in during their walk, and she's, a few teachers have been in to see it, and we were in the middle of doing math, and it's amazing to see what the children are doing. And I'm not doing it. They are doing it. It's just mind-boggling to see five and six-year-olds, what they're accomplishing this current, a current early year in math. It's amazing. And I thank Mrs. Ippolito for what she's done and the training and support she's given us, because it's been outstanding.
Thank you. In the back, Mrs. Lojek, there's someone behind you.
Hi, my name's Jeff Straznick. I'm the principal at the Woburn Street Elementary School in Wildwood School. Before I started as a principal, I worked in Boston Public Schools for 12 years. Worked some of that time as an elementary math coach and also a general ed, special ed elementary teacher. In Boston, we used what was called Turk Investigations, which I had thought was the end-all, be-all. I used it as a coach, used it as a teacher. It was amazing. I mean, we were getting kids to do things that I never thought kids would do. With any new program, it's going to be scary. It's going to be scary for the teachers, for the kids, for the adults, the administrators. When I left Boston in 2008, I'd always hoped I'd go somewhere where they were doing investigations. Like, I want to do investigations. Again, I want to bring it. When I heard we were doing Envisions, I wasn't familiar with what Envisions was. I'd gone to some of the trainings, and it's almost identical to Investigations, and actually better than Investigations. It has more resources than Investigations. I spoke to one of the representatives who was there from Pearson, and we were talking, and, you know, I told him I was a math coach, and he said, where? He knew all about it. And he said, just to let you know, he said, there's a lot of things that are in Investigations are in Envisions. When I heard that, I said, we have to go with this. There is, I didn't, I didn't want to hear anything else. This had to be the program we did. And going into classrooms, talking with teachers, I've met with the teachers, they are seeing the kids do amazing things, and I am so excited to go in there and see what these kids are doing. So where I was saying that I thought I'd never see it again, I feel like I'm seeing it now. It's just called Envisions, and it's very exciting. And just listening to the teachers talk about it, I really hope that you approve that. I couldn't be more excited to go with it.
I just wanted to add to, because to Mrs. Burnham's question, I think you had asked the question specifically about other programs, and I'm pretty sure I saw a slide that the vertical team did evaluate other programs. And is that correct?
I'd be curious to find out what type of, what programs, you know, what type of programs that you did look into. And that's going to be a question. I want to thank you for bringing it up.
So Trailblazers 2014 was sent, and basically, the program looked like they added, I feel horrible, I'm on TV saying this, can I say things about this company?
Sure.
Okay.
Sorry to pick up the spot.
Yeah. And essentially, it looked like they just put number lines onto the same old product. So already, it was off.
And I think even at the secondary level, they have been going through the curriculum renewal cycle. They've been examining products that are out there. And I think what Ms. Peters can speak to is the fact that, yes, there are many products out there that say they're Common Core-aligned. And what they have done is, you know, find all and replace, and they've swapped out standards, but they have not redesigned the curriculum to deliver the kind of rigor and coherence and focus and include the math practices in the program. This program has been designed to deliver that curriculum. It's not just a rebranding of an existing text.
Have you looked, oh, no, please, go ahead.
So in the beginning of each, they call them topic, they don't call them units, there's actual teacher professional development right in the front, where it breaks down the standards into the focus piece, the coherence piece, the rigor piece, and spells it out to support teachers in the way that they instruct students. And I have not seen any other program that provided that. So that was a huge selling point for us as well. And some of the other programs, it just seemed like it was, I mean, way, way back when I started in Wilmington, we had the HEATH Math Program, and it was basically, here's a book, do number one through 36. And several of those programs, that's what it was. It was, you know, not to the level, because the, I think what the other piece of this program too is, not only are students learning better to be mathematicians, but our teachers are engaging in becoming better math teachers, you know? So to me, it felt like it was a win-win.
The other thing too, I want to point out, is that both Lisa and I have participated in many networking meetings that are supported by the Northeast DSEC. There's lots of conversation that's been going on around the shift that needs to happen in instruction and learning around the new framework from Massachusetts. We set criteria and looked at other products. The other products didn't match the criteria. This product did, and that's why this product got to the point of piloting. And that was approved last year under the previous superintendent.
Can I ask you, did you look at, it's a program that I'm not familiar with. I just looked at it quickly, as I did with this piece, and I'd like to kind of absorb it more. It's very positive. I feel very good about the feedback coming from the classrooms. And there's one that someone told me called Math in Focus. And along with that, and maybe if you're, I was hoping that you'd be familiar with that, it came with a very strong professional development, because I think that too is a key in switching over to a new program in order for all teachers to buy in, not to be, you know, to just commit to it, and not be, you know, have a strong basis in executing, I think is, I think it's helpful to hear, because I think that's a huge element with the success that you're seeing in the classroom, is the comfortable, the comfortable aspects of understanding how it's to be executed, and the tools to use, you know, with the differentiated learners within your classrooms. I wanted to know what your thoughts were, let's say, on that one, because I, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. In meeting regularly with my colleagues at the district level in neighboring districts, we've had lots of conversation around the products that are coming out. And honestly, the other districts in this area are looking at Envisions. And actually, Stonem, I believe, is piloting the previous edition, not even the newest edition. So I think what I'm saying is, we, we've looked at, you know, the progression document, you remember that wired, you know, it looked like an electrical schematic? We've studied that. We have aligned our curriculum in that way. This is not, you know, we're flipping through a catalog, looking for something that had bells and whistles. That's not what this is about. This is a deep understanding of the structure of the curriculum, the way that they have built it into the text. So I think that that's why we're seeing that other districts are also looking to pilot Envisions, because it does have all the features that we want to support all kinds of learners, parents, families, teachers, with the right kinds of materials, for all of them to be successful, for the teachers to feel comfortable and confident with delivery of instruction, and for all of the children to feel success in understanding and learning math. That's why we're looking at this. And again, many, in order to, you know, hit the market, standards were adopted in 2011. And I'm telling you that before 2012 rolled around, there were publishers that said that they had Common Core-aligned programs. And I can guarantee you that they weren't. It takes a long time to develop this. This is the curriculum we would have developed and published ourselves if we had had the time to fully develop a curriculum. We were part of the way there with the materials that we pulled together with the curriculum that we've been using for the last year plus.
I want to just offer something too. I'm very familiar with Math in Focus. Reading Public Schools went through a similar process two years ago in terms of trying to decide what program to go to. They explored, similar to the same process, similar to the process that Wilmington used, they, they looked at different programs. They, and they went out to different districts, and they saw different programs in action. I will say that the decision in Reading really came down to Envisions versus Singapore Math, Math in Focus. Reading made the decision to go with Math in Focus, but the decision was based more on the unique needs of Reading, and it was also a focus on, part of the focus too was, and I have to be careful about how exactly I put this, because I don't want to make it sound like we are Wilmington Public Schools and would not be willing to spend as much money as possible. But the Envision, the Math in Focus program comes at a significant premium to what we're asking for. When Reading implemented the Singapore Math Program, Math in Focus, the cost was $280,000 versus the $180,000. There's a lot of professional development that has to go along with it. It's a very It's a very, very different way of teaching math. There would have to be a lot of parent interaction as well. I think that, from my perspective, and that was one of the concerns in the evaluation when we were looking at the program, from my perspective, the staff here, the teachers here have been very strategic in terms of ensuring that they're spending the dollars wisely, that it's the best program they get, they can get for the money that's being spent, and that it is going to be quickly and easily able to be used by teachers and still get students where they need to be. And so when I, not to interrupt, but when I'm in the classrooms and I'm seeing teachers who've really had, maybe at this point, just a couple days' worth of professional development, so quickly be able to accommodate and get accustomed to that curriculum and deliver it. And I too have talked to students, I talked to students at the North and the West, and asked specifically about what they thought about this new math program, and they were talking about visual bridges. They had to explain to me what a visual bridge was, honestly. So, they're obviously getting it, and they're able to access it. So, are there other programs? Absolutely, but each district has to come to this decision based on what, what is in the best interest of the students, and knowing their staff, and knowing their parents, and knowing the students, and what's going to work best for that group.
I couldn't agree with you more, Sabrina. I couldn't agree with you more. My aspect is, it's tough to, as to make that decision, and to make an intelligent decision without seeing what other aspects, you know, saying, "Well, we looked at this program and this program. This is what was short here, and this was what's short here, and this is why Envision is the, is the curriculum for us." And I think, in order for me to kind of, to get that understanding, so I can say, "All right, I can understand why you would go with Envision," that compare, contrast piece is helpful, and that's just with my, my, and I'm not familiar with Envision per se, and I'd like to take more time, just to get more involved as to what, you know, it means. And I think that's where my concerns lie, and simply that, and I certainly agree with you too, that I think the, it needs to be a good fit for our community, as well as our students and staff. Did you mention in the presentation, it was my last question, I promise, does this, does this go up to eighth grade? Does it have, it doesn't, it just goes up to fifth?
Actually, it goes through sixth.
Goes, okay.
I want to bring that up afterwards, too.
Oh, okay. I just thought, I heard.
Yeah, that's good. I just wanted to, Ms. Mills.
I have a question for Mrs. Burns. I just wanted to clarify something. You had mentioned you had concerns. Are you concerned with Envision, or are you concerned with Pearson?
Concerns with Pearson. There's a lot of legal turmoils that's been in the media over the past year with regards to Pearson and their programs, their programs and their selling pieces, their lawsuits, I think, I don't know how current they are with regards to the bidding process in certain states, the testing, inaccuracy of their testing piece with Park, and then the one that was filed in December of 2013 in New York State with regards to a, I think, I believe, it was a nonprofit that is a, is the parent, it was a nonprofit company that Pearson is the parent of. Pearson just had to put out like a seven million dollar payout to the state of New York, seven million dollar conflict of interest, or something to that respect. I, I'm not, I haven't seen the article fairly recent, I was looking for it, just to, that's, that's Pearson, it may not be this product, product per se, but I just, you, you, I've been very vocal with my regards to the assessment piece, which is a whole nother animal, which is separate from what we're discussing, but that's where my regards are, and I just want to make sure that I'm sure Pearson is not creating curriculum to meet their, I don't want to, I don't want to teach to the test, you know?
Exactly.
And I just, and, and that's why, and that's why I think I do need more time to kind of feel secure with that.
So I think I have some information to you, because when I was meeting with the rep, he was very open, and he said, "There's a lot of negative press letting you know." And he was very open, and he explained to me that some of the press came from different state commissioners who were taken to Finland and other countries, and it was viewed in someone's eyes as that they were being bought. And he made it very clear to me, and it made total sense to me, because I had attended a lot of professional development, the reason they were in those countries, because those are the highest performing countries in the world in terms of math.
I don't want to inhibit this going forward, you know? I just want to make sure that.
I'm just sharing information that I know that maybe that just helps.
It does.
And then, you know, the concern is always, you know, teaching to the test and such. The, and what he was explaining to me as well, is that there are different divisions of Pearson, and so this is our curriculum division, which is separate from an assessment division, because when looking at the program, it's been stated and stated over and over again, it's really about the best fit for the students in Wilmington.
Absolutely.
And this program, wholeheartedly, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put my, honestly, I wouldn't put my seal of approval on it if I didn't strongly feel this way, is the best fit. And during our training today, we happen to have two sessions, we had one in the morning and one in the afternoon, and the presenter, who they fly in from New York to come train us, she said to me, she says, "I really just have to say, I, I just want to videotape these teachers, and kudos to them for how far they've already come with this program as a pilot." Like, they, they should be on a pedestal for all of other teachers to see. It's like, all of that, it's kind, I live this every single day, so to me, I'm very passionate about it, but it's just, like, all of that together, it just feels very bright.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have a two-part question, pretty easy, and I might have missed it in the presentation, but first off, how many students are currently involved in our pilot? Approximate.
Approximate.
Yeah. I think I heard a number, but I.
So we have, that would be, because we, the reason why it's not like simple math is because one of our classes has forty-one students.
I did hear that number, but it's got to be more than forty-one kids total, right?
Oh, absolutely. That's just one fifth grade.
Thirteen different classes.
That's just one.
Thirteen different classes.
So that would be fifty, a hundred, two hundred and fifty.
Say twenty per class.
About three hundred, three hundred and fifty students.
Okay, okay. And the second part of that question, I did hear that there was a information night for parents pre-pilot, or, or as the pilot was being rolled out.
In October.
Just for.
Pilot parents.
The parents of the pilot students. How many parents attended?
Forty-eight.
Okay.
And I received seven.
Okay, and I'm guessing we have some parents here tonight that have questions, and I did hear that we have an information session for everyone next week.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly, yes.
I have a quick question regarding parents. Part of you, there was a piece in the presentation that you, that there was some concerns on parents, but it wasn't regarding Envisions itself, but more towards Common Core. Can you just clarify that a little bit?
We have had parents come forward with concerns. Both Mrs. Ippolito and myself have spent time talking to parents about the concerns that they have. And when you listen to the, the issues that they raise as a concern, it really connects back to the standards, not, not the Pearson product or the Envisions program. It's really a fundamental issue with what we're expected to teach, and what children are expected to know and be able to do. And that's an issue really with, with the standards, the frameworks that were adopted by the state back in 2011. We're really obligated as professionals to deliver a curriculum aligned with the standards that are adopted by the state. So it's, it really would not.
So how do you address those concerns to the parents? Do you just basically tell them, "This is what it is, and you have to follow the standards," and it's not?
We, we do, I mean, that's exactly the message. I mean, that the standards are the standards, those were adopted actually by December of 2010, the start, began, implemented, it was a phased implementation. Last year was the first year that MCAS testing was based on fully implementing the new standards. I suspect, as we dig into the data, what we learn is that perhaps some of our performance on that assessment last year might not have been as strong, because we were still in the process of aligning, and now with this program, we have stronger resources, we would hope that we would help to correct for some of those gaps that we're seeing. If we're a district that's content with being at sixty-five percent of our students scoring advanced or proficient, you know, you stick with your current, what your current practice is. But if that's not, then you've got to evolve, and you've got to begin to align and provide resources to teachers that will allow them to provide the instruction with these new frameworks that have been in place now for three years. And whether we test Park or we test MCAS, even if we don't test with Park, MCAS is still destined for a major overhaul to realign it to these new frameworks as well. And whether that happens in, you know, two years or three years, or we go with Park, either way, the assessments are changing. It already changed last year, and we're finding ourselves behind the eight ball. I look at some of the communities that they highlighted already as having adopted this program already, and I believe they adopted it last year and were using it last year. And so their performance on MCAS, Belmont, Burlington, Hopkinton, Melrose, if you look at Belmont and Hopkinton in particular, because I know they came up when I was doing my analysis of performance for districts that were demographically similar to Wilmington, they, their performance on those assessments is in the eighty percent range for all of their students scoring advanced or proficient. And their gap, and this is the more important thing, because we all have identified this as an issue, their gap between high-need students and non-high-need students is a heck of a lot smaller than our gap. So something there is going right, and I'd have a hard time, I'm not saying it's a causal relationship, but there's definitely a correlation, and I think those are the types of things we look at when we make decisions about, is this the right program? Trailblazers was probably the right program when it came out, under the old standards, but we haven't had those old standards now for three years, and it's time to move on, if you will.
Could I, I know there was somebody over here who wanted to speak. If you're not in the teacher, could you just mention your name?
Valerie Malo. I'm a parent of a fourth grader who's in the pilot program, and I wanted to add my two cents.
Thank you.
Our experience with the program has not been very positive, and specifically in looking at the program, you know, other than finding some errors and some misuse terminology in the book, you know, I've found that there's some types of questioning in the material that really isn't developmentally appropriate for children of that age. There's a section called writing to explain, and there's a section called number sense. And they ask the children to sort of explain in sort of essay format their methodologies for solving problems, and the other one shows an incorrectly solved problem, and they ask the students to explain how the kid solved the problem wrong and how to do it right. And my daughter had a lot of difficulties with these types of questions, and I kind of wondered why, because she, she did score advanced on her MCAT, Math MCAS last year, so she's a solid math student. And the more I looked into it, I found, you know, a lot of the abstract thinking and the abstract reasoning that this curriculum requires really is beyond the capabilities of elementary school-aged children. It has to do with brain development and cognitive development over the years. And, you know, asking around, you know, her other friends that are in the curriculum, in the program and in her class, and they're not answering these questions right either. So they'll say, you know, you know, "Timmy did this problem, this problem, and he got this answer, and what did he do wrong?" And my daughter will go and answer the question correctly and say, "Well, he got it wrong, and this is the right way to do it." And I find that, that the children, you know, my, my daughter can do a lot of problem-solving, but the, she's not gaining proficiency in this area, and I feel that it's due to the developmental inappropriateness of it. Beyond that, we find that like this, they're taught a lot of different ways or a lot of different methods to do, you know, how to add or how to multiply, and that's fine. But where I feel like there's some pigeonholing going on in the curriculum is that some, some of these questions, a lot of these questions require the students to use a specific method in order to get to the answer, specifically the ones that say, "Explain what he did wrong." Well, my daughter doesn't use breaking apart to multiply, so she's not going to go down that path to get the answer, and she's not going to see what the disconnect is. So there are those types of issues. Thirdly, you know, I talked to a lot of other parents whose, whose children are in the pilot, whose children aren't in the pilot. The children aren't in the pilot, last November, they were already beginning a unit on division. And at that time, my child's class, they were beginning multiplication. And so that was the beginning of Topic Six within the textbook, and then Division was introduced in Topic Nine, which they haven't even gotten to yet. So it seems that they are three topics or three chapters behind where the other program is. And I know, I was told by the folks in charge here, they said, "Well, we're just doing things in a different order, but we'll get to it all, and we're all going to cover the same things." So I had asked the other parents, you know, "Did you cover this? Did you do addition with carrying? Did you do the subtraction with borrowing, the estimation and rounding, the multiplication?" They had covered all the topics that we had covered, but they're, they're still ahead, and that's a huge concern for me, because I'm, I'm not confident that by the end of the year, everything is going to get covered. And the last point I'd like to make is that parents in the pilot and parents who aren't in the pilot are feeling largely shut out of the decision-making process and the feedback process here. During the first meeting in October, I had asked what sort of data collection was being used in order to assess the success of this pilot program, and what Dr. Burnham had told me was, "Yes, the feedback from the teachers." But there would be no solicitation of feedback from parents or from students unless perhaps they came and said something. And I said, "Well, what, you know, what, what, what can I do?" And they said, "You can go to the school committee meeting and tell them." And I, I felt that was a huge slap in the face. And I've also, you know, talked to parents whose children aren't in the pilot program, but they've heard about it now, and they're interested in it, but they were excluded from this first meeting, that was in October, where I had to register and print out a ticket and sign in when I attended. So I think there's a lot of feeling that there isn't the level of parental inclusion that there should be in this. So this meeting that's next week was a result of requests that I made to Dr. Burnham. I said, "You need to present this curriculum to everybody and give the visibility that it deserves." So, so that's, that's why there is this meeting next week. And even so, I found it interesting in the email that went out about this, that it mentioned the 2011 curriculum frameworks. It did not mention Pearson and Envision. It did not mention the pilot program, and it did not mention the intent to just completely change over the curriculum next year. So I felt that a lot of the relevant details were missing from the public notification of this. So I guess what I'm asking of the school committee is, I please invite you to, all of you to attend this meeting next Tuesday. There are other, are other parents who feel, as I do, independent of what the teachers are telling you, there are other parents who are not happy with this program and what it means when they're sitting at the dining room table at night trying to do the homework. And I ask that, before you make any decision on this program, that you really take the time to listen to them and listen to the students. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to come. It's always hard, I think it's very difficult to come and bring a negative point of view, but I think that's how we grow, is from the negative points of view, that might be something we've overlooked, that the parents, of course, because I'm a grandparent who does the homework with a third grader. And did you know that, obviously, someone knows nothing about Array? I kept trying to get, what Array? What is Array? I don't get it at all. But it's completely, of course, this is completely new to some of us, like, really new. And so we're trying to keep a very open mind about it, but you've brought up some practical points, and I'm sure that they would be addressed. And I really appreciate, we all appreciate your coming and taking the time to do this. And the other thing, I was going to, at the end of this, say to the school committee, hopefully, as many of us as possible will be able to make that meeting next week.
You know where it is? The middle school.
It's at the middle school. I just wanted to clarify, the meeting that's occurring on the sixteenth is a meeting about math standards pre-K to twelve. It's not necessarily focused on Envision math, but there's been more and more questions, rightfully so, about the entire spectrum of math standards and what exactly, what is the change? People have lots of questions about, we keep saying that math is different now, that these math standards are different, so that's the focus. It's not just on the Envision math program. I think one of the big things that we talk about when we're talking about this change in standards is not just the content standards, and Lisa referenced this in her presentation as well, but there, it's the focus on math practices, which is very new, which is, I think, what is, is really confusing, I think, for a lot, lots of folks, and myself included. Some of the stuff that Mrs. Malo talked about in terms of explaining your work and being given a problem that's done incorrectly, and, and having to explain what is incorrect about it, all is around math practices. That's what the math is supposed to, basically gets you up to a higher level of Bloom's taxonomy, where you're not just comprehending, but you're actually able to analyze and synthesize. And in, in fourth grade, I mean, you heard Mrs. Murphy talking about what some of the kindergartners are doing. So certainly, once they're challenged, they are able to do that. And that's, as I've gone around and talked to now over five hundred people in the Wilmington community. community and Wilmington School community, what I keep hearing is, we need to have more rigorous, challenging curriculum, and that's exactly what this program is doing, is providing that level of rigor and that challenge. Even the different methods that are being taught, it's because research shows that different students learn differently. And so if we can provide them with multiple pathways to get to the same skills and the same standards, that's part of the skill, that's part of the art of being a teacher, so.
Well, one thing I don't understand, I was bringing up the, I'll bring up now. I am hearing that our children are no longer being taught in school their times tables, that teachers are told not to teach the times tables, and that, because it doesn't seem to be happening. And they'll, I was doing the times tables the other night, and I said, I don't want to say this, because you all know how old I am. I said to her, and I remember that from sixty-two years ago. Sixty-two years, Dana. Oh, my God.
They had math then?
She's like, that's how old you are? Oh, my God. This is terrible. So, but anyway, that is the one thing out of math, and I admit, here's the mathematician in the group here, for sure, but I admit that I really feel that they need to learn their times tables. I think it's a big problem.
Fact fluency is one of the components of the new framework.
Excellent.
It's not gone away.
I think it's a different, I think part of the challenge is the change in vocabulary.
Right.
You know, what you might, what we call multiplication tables, right?
And the second thing is, I'll get right back to you in a second. The second thing is that one of the concerns when we went through this a few years ago, and we're talking about a change in the math with the Trailblazers, was what are we going to do with that year that changes? Now, you're saying this goes up through sixth grade, but we're not using it in sixth? I hear you talking about we're using it up through fifth.
Up through fifth.
What happens with that group, the change? It didn't happen, it did not happen well with this last group.
Right.
And this has nothing to do with anybody who's presently here, but it did not work. And so we've got to find a way, I hope that part of this plan that we're working on simultaneously is what to do with the fifth, sixth, seventh grade math curriculum there, because now we're very concerned about that.
I think maybe Mrs. Peters might.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Do you want to talk about transition from elementary to sort of through to middle school and high school, and what that looks like if we were to go with an Envision program, and how we address that?
Feel free to stand up, sit up here if you want. You can stand up, come up here so they could hear.
The Envisions program does go to sixth grade, but the decision was to just pilot it to the fifth grade, because we had looked six through twelve last year at many programs. And unfortunately, as Mrs. Burnham said, they're really just repeats of what we already have in our closets from nineteen ninety-seven. They are just, they just fit the standards in to the same content. And even though standards are content based, there's the math practices, and the standards have changed so much that they've actually changed our curriculum. Algebra is not what algebra was five years ago. So we spent a lot of time rewriting every single course, and we found no books that actually, or no programs even, that actually fit the curriculum that we have, that we have aligned very well to the Common Core. There is one program that I believe the middle school liked. It was Big Ideas. And that's not complete. That's one of the reasons why we didn't pursue it yet. It's not a complete program. It is a program that was written for the Common Core. So it's not a book that's been out there that is using the same content and just embedding the standards in. It's actually written for the Common Core. So it does match our curriculum pretty well, the one that we wrote, but it's not complete. They have most of the middle school done, but they have none of the high school done. And I think, again, it's been a long time since I've been doing math here, I think we need a six through twelve program to be a continuum. I do think that you will see that there will be transition from five to six, once the program from six through twelve has been actually determined. But we, at that point last year, we just didn't see anything that fit what we needed. And we didn't want to put forth any expenditure for something that we weren't sure of. So, but we are aware of the transition, and I certainly hope to be part of helping that, even though I'm not in that role anymore, but I certainly hope to be helping out with the transition from the fifth to the sixth.
Because it says, we'll have even more parents being frustrated by what's happening. It's so hard to change, to let people know. We are working on it, we are aware of it, and people are putting in all their time. I saw somebody was very eager, had a hand up in there.
In the back there.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Duhon. I teach first grade at the Woburn Street School. And in kind of talking about multiplication tables and transitioning, one thing I really feel strongly about is that I really feel like I'm setting a strong foundation in first grade and in kindergarten. My kids, their math facts are, I mean, they are shooting them out. They know their math facts, and it's because I've taught them so many different strategies, and they've really latched on to a lot of those strategies, and they're using them independently now at this point in the year, which is something I really feel for the first time this year with this program, that they really are utilizing different strategies and using them independently. And I feel as though these strategies now are setting such a good basis for when they go on to second grade and third grade and fourth grade and so on. And I also feel like the vocabulary and the understanding piece is so huge. My kids really understand addition. They understand it not just as numbers, they understand it as quantities. So they understand addition and subtraction and what they actually mean, and they're able to take it and use it in different situations, whether it's problem solving or math facts. And I really do feel that it sets just a strong foundation for what's to come as they get older.
That was, in the paperwork that you sent us, there was a thing about the pre, how people want it to be even stronger in the pre-K area, and then going on from there, that that's a new thing that people are really looking at. The strength of that is what holds up the top.
And the Common Core did not include pre-K standards? Massachusetts added pre-K standards in both math and ELA.
Thank you. Did we have any?
I do.
Okay. Ms. Mills, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm kind of stuck on the last question I asked regarding the parents' concern, and I'm stuck, because I'm a parent of a fifth grader, and I understand the frustration when you're doing math, and you can't explain to your kid how to do it, because you don't know how to do it. But my child is not in the pilot program. So I guess where I'm stuck is, are we doing enough to clarify to the parents that this is not about Envision, it's more about Common Core? Where the parents aren't leaving frustrated because they just can't see what the difference is, what their concerns are. I guess, and I'm not sure if this meeting on Tuesday will explain that, but.
That is, that is the intent. The intent is to talk exactly about that. We talk a lot about Common Core curriculum frameworks, and, you know, we sometimes deliberately say Massachusetts curriculum frameworks because it's not just the Common Core for Massachusetts. It's never been just the Common Core for Massachusetts, and we think that we just, you know, do a disservice to Massachusetts standards by just lumping it in with Common Core. And there's so much debate and controversy over Common Core, which, you know, may be fine in states where they're still in the process of adopting, but this happened already. As I said, this ship has already sailed, and certainly, I, you know, I wasn't here, so I don't know kind of what level of presentation was done, but the presentation next week is intended to say, here's what these new math standards look like, pre-K to twelve. Here is how things are different, here is how things are changed, and here is how we, as Wilmington Public Schools, have been addressing and plan to continue addressing this shift in our instructional practices, our materials, so that kids are able to learn the standards and the skills within the new curriculum frameworks.
Right. And through my conversation with Mrs. Mollo and her sharing questions and maybe misconceptions amongst other parents, confusion, she did suggest a larger meeting, and it was clear from her comments that a larger meeting is needed to provide clarification around what the new standards are and what that means for curriculum in general, programs aside. So in response to that, we set up a meeting as soon as we could possibly pull together the necessary folks for the panel for the presentation and the venue. As you know, it's a busy time of year, and there are lots of competing events in the evenings. So to find an open date that was also, that the presenters were all going to be available, that was the first available date. I would have had it last week had I been able to pull together a venue and all the presenters. Because I think that it's important to address the concerns and the misconceptions that might be out there for parents. And I think it's important that parents have a voice. That's why we had the information night for the parents who were involved in the pilot program, and I encouraged any of them, when we move forward with a presentation, that they certainly will welcome to attend and voice their support, or lack thereof, for the program at that time.
Could I ask, was there a particular reason not to, in gathering the data from the pilot piece, to gather the parents' perspective, since I think the homeschool piece is such an important piece as well? And I think it's just as important to some level for parents to buy into this new curriculum. Was there a reason that, to get the feedback with regards to?
We got feedback that evening from parents, and there's another parent in the audience who's waiting to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me, I apologize.
But we did hear from parents that night about what their experience has been thus far, and that was really early, you know, in the transition there. And a lot of the parents were quite happy with it. Some had questions, and they really were questions more relative to, again, the standards, not the so much.
Program itself?
Right.
Gotcha.
That's been my experience as well, when I've talked to parents, and I've talked to a lot of parents, and it's more about the not understanding the new curriculum frameworks, the Common Core standards, particularly the math practices, really not understanding how, people are used to standards as content standards, but this notion of math practices is very new and confusing to people. The parents that I've talked to, parents who are, have students that are not in the pilot program have said, I'm so glad that Wilmington is addressing this. It seems, from what I'm hearing from, you know, my neighbor down the street whose child is in the program, that it's rigorous, it's challenging to students, it's providing them with a variety of ways to access the standards and the skills. So I have yet to hear, other than tonight, I have yet to hear anybody say anything critical about the program. And I haven't actively solicited that, but people have been very forthcoming with their input to me in a time, and I've probably spoken to this point about at least a hundred parents. In addition, obviously watching and listening to teachers as well and hearing their feedback, but also students. I have talked to students, fourth graders, fifth graders, and, you know, they're really, they're very excited about the program.
Well, I would expect any program not to be a hundred percent, per se, but I would like a program for those, for the example that she presented with regards to her daughter accessing that particular piece, that I want to make sure that that program is flexible enough to address that, I call it a struggle, not, you know, per se, and that's something that I'd like.
And I would offer this, it's always been the case that you would encourage parents, if their children are struggling at home with homework, to have the conversation with the teacher, so that the teacher can be aware of what the struggle is at home, so that they can better support in the classroom to remediate any struggle that that individual student is having. That's why the feedback coming from parents directly to the teachers in this case is really important and powerful, because we did ask teachers, you know, what sort of feedback are you getting? So there is, there has been opportunity for parents to, some parents have emailed Mrs. Zepolito directly with comment or question.
We don't want to, I don't want to get into this, we don't want to get into parents and personal things tonight, but I will, I'm going to call on one more person who I think is a parent back there, and then I think we'll summarize up what you feel we could do next. And we definitely will not be taking a vote on this tonight, the school committee, because we're not quite. But we'll have the meeting that's coming up, so we'll talk about that in a minute. But could you just identify yourself for us?
My name's Amy Ayers-Koney. I have a second and a third grader at the Woburn Street School. I'm also a fifth grade teacher at the North, so I feel like I have a kind of a special perspective on things. My, both of my kids are in the pilot program, and I am not a pilot teacher. So it's been really amazing to see the things that they're doing in second and third grade, and the continuity that could be happening throughout the grades, did we, you know, do we choose, if we choose to adopt this. And I just think that, like Mrs. Delai was saying, the, what we are requiring of our children and the level of thinking that we want from them is truly there with this program. And I say that, an example, tonight I was doing my son's math homework with him, and the question was, what is an array? And like Mrs. LoJack said, that's not something we've typically used in our program, and I had to say to him, honey, I'm sorry, I can't fully help you. He had a right of written response. So I said, just tell me, what do you think an array is? And I, and I'm not even kidding, he told me this answer. I really can't even repeat him verbatim. He not only told me the answer, it was like textbook, and he just said it from memory. And he would never have been able to, to explain something like that to me with that level of understanding, I truly believe, having not had this program. And I'm here not only tonight as a staff member of Wilmington in support of this, but I'm here as a parent in support of this. And obviously, and everyone might have different opinions, and, but I'm saying that as a parent, I am in support of this program. I have seen it firsthand with my two children, both of whom have such a deeper understanding of what they're doing in math, not just being able to do it, but being able to explain to me why it is they're doing it, and truly understanding why they're doing it. And I, tonight, I was truly excited, and I said to myself, oh, that is unbelievable. I'm not so sure any of my fifth grade students who are not in this pilot program truly have such an understanding of this. And I was excited, and I said right at that moment, whatever we have to do tonight, I have to be at this meeting, and I have to truly tell you that I truly believe that this is a wonderful program, and I hope you seriously consider its adoption.
Thank you, Mrs. Ayers-Koney. I don't want you all, I'm going to cut off discussion now, because we haven't even gotten to the budget. So this is going to be a long night. I just wanted to say, don't all go away being nervous that we're not going to vote for this. What we normally do, and so I'm just trying to get us back on track as to how we really do things, we always do things, and when we have, Mary and I are working our way through this, but we normally, on anything for money, we go through it the first time, and then we go away for a couple of weeks, and then we vote on it. This is not unusual, this is the way we do it. So it's not saying we're not going to go forward for this particular program. We do our questions and get them answered, and think, well, if we have any more questions, we'll contact Mrs. Burnham, and if that's all right. Oh, no, yeah, Mrs. Zepolito, I'm sorry. I always call you Lisa, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
And do, but we'll go, do you have any more questions?
I just wanted to see if we could just tell everybody again, the meeting details for next week, so everybody has that information.
Sure.
The meeting is next Tuesday, the sixteenth, at six thirty at the middle school in the auditorium.
Thank you.
And again, it's to address the standards, the Massachusetts math standards, not a program.
Thank you.
That's all. Okay, so this will be on our agenda for January fourteenth, and I'm sure that we certainly are very impressed with how excited you are, and I know there's always glitches on programs. And I know that the parents will be talking to people after this, and we'll be able to talk about their concerns with them. Yeah. If that, don't talk with them. If that, don't talk with you, okay. All right, anybody have anything? Are we all set? Thank you, all for your, yes, please, go ahead.
I'd like to personally invite anybody into my classroom to see a lesson, if that would be helpful.
Oh, that's nice.
I'm there every day, five days.
That's wonderful, thank you. Well, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
I guess that was excellent, because you could let her- Why did everybody leave for my budget present?
Oh, I told you, it was getting too late.
We'll have to move on. Scoot to the side again, too. I'm actually going to stand for this, so that I can project a little bit for folks at the back of the room. Again, I want to thank the folks who are here. We've got administrators, and we've even got some staff who stuck around, so thank you for that, who are here to support us in this process, but also answer any questions that you might have as we go through. And I'm learning Wilmington's budget process, and so as I understand, this is the par for the course, is that the superintendent will present a preliminary budget this time of the year, here in early December, and that we will have another opportunity to present a final recommended budget in January. So this is a very preliminary budget. And I also just want to acknowledge and thank, obviously, Mr. Rogiro for all his hard work. He is certainly the one who is behind the scenes, doing the yeoman's share of the number crunching and work that goes into this budget, and couldn't do that without him. So, I'll just start by reminding us sort of why we're here in Wilmington, and our mission statement, and the Wilmington Public Schools will provide a student-centered education. I think that's really important to focus on, student-centered. We try, when we develop our budget, to always keep that student piece in mind, and that when we're making decisions, and when folks are requesting items for the budget, they're always focused on what's in the best interest of students. And as we go through the prioritization process, again, we're focused on what's in the best interest of students across the district, not necessarily in a particular building, but across the entire district. So this is our mission statement, and I think it's a very powerful one, around critical inquiry, a key skill that's being focused on now with our transition to the Common Core and Massachusetts curriculum frameworks, but also the emphasis on students being productive citizens, being respectful, and being able to adapt in this very changing world that we all live in. I've obviously had the opportunity to do a lot of research on Wilmington Public Schools, and there's a very strong commitment that is very evident here in Wilmington to our children and our schools. Here in Wilmington, children have universal access to early education. More and more districts are making the move to full-day kindergarten, but it's something that you've had here in Wilmington for several years now, and it is a significant commitment of resources, but it really establishes a very strong foundation for children. And I think it's fantastic that 100% of Wilmington's students attend publicly-funded full-day kindergarten across the state. That number's more like 60%. So, we obviously are providing a strong benefit. Wilmington children come to school. We have 80% of our children who are absent fewer than 10 days per year, and we all like to think it's because of the great experience that our staff are providing for kids, that makes it an enjoyable place for them to come every day to school and learn. Wilmington children stay in school as well. 98% of our students are enrolled in school all year. That's referred to as a stability rate, and we have a very high stability rate here in Wilmington. And last year, we had six students drop out of school compared to 15 two years prior. The number's been dropping, it was 15, and then nine, and then six. So we're able to really keep kids in school and engaged. We perform better than the state average. The graduation rate here in Wilmington is 91.2% compared to a state average of 85%. Our SAT scores across the board are consistently higher than the state average, so we're certainly preparing students for their post-secondary education. 30% more test takers score three or above on AP exams than the state average here in Wilmington. So we are providing them certainly with a rigorous, challenging experience. And 88% of our graduates go on to pursue post-secondary education as compared to a state average of 75%. So we have a lot, obviously, to be proud of. We also have room for improvement. Nothing that you see here is necessarily news to us, because we've had presentations over the last couple of months around our performance on standardized tests. But just to capture a few highlights for you, the first chart in the upper-left quadrant there is the students who score proficient or advanced on the 3rd grade ELA MCAS. I chose that specifically because ELA MCAS in 3rd grade is so foundational. If kids have not received a strong foundation in literacy by 3rd grade, there's a lot of evidence to show that they will struggle and potentially not catch up. What we see here in this graphic is that 70% of our students are scoring advanced or proficient, all students. When it comes to our high-need student, that number's 36%. So this is the achievement gap, or the proficiency gap that we refer to. We spend a little bit of time talking about math, and in the second graph to the right, we see students scoring proficient or advanced on 4th grade at Math MCAS. This is an area where we definitely struggle, not just for our high-need students, but all students. We're at 59%. So, we are above the state average, but not as much above the state average as I think some of our other metrics are. And so I think that, again, attests to sort of some of the information you heard earlier today around the need to invest in a new math program. Our high-need students are really struggling at this grade level. You can see 22% scoring proficient or advanced on the Math MCAS in the 4th grade. In the 8th grade, we definitely have made some ground, made up some ground between 4th and 8th grade, so now we have 65% of all students scoring advanced or proficient, but we still have a pretty persistent gap with our high-need students, only 24% scoring proficient or advanced. And another metric I show is here is science. This is the 8th grade Science and Technology Engineering MCAS. 60% of all students are scoring proficient and advanced, whereas only 31% of our high-need students are scoring proficient and advanced. When we compare ourselves to demographically similar communities, this chart comes right off of the DESE website. They have a district analysis and review tool called the DART tool, and they pre-select based on demographic characteristics, specifically enrollment, but enrollment of low-income students, students with disabilities, and students that are English-language learners. And so these communities that they've pre-selected and compared to Wilmington have similar demographics when it comes to that enrolled population. What you see in this chart is the percent scoring proficient or higher in the 2014 Spring MCAS, and we are at the bottom of the list alphabetically, but when you look up, you will see that performance-wise, with, I think, one exception, we are performing a lower percentage of proficient or advanced than any of these demographically similar communities. To show, I just want to show some of the other things that kind of drive our budget. So obviously, student performance was a big piece of what drives our budget request, wanting to address these gaps and make sure that we have the resources and staffing in place to address the gaps. But enrollment is a significant, obviously, a significant driver of our budget as well. Here you see our 10-year enrollment history, as well as a 5-year projection. Our enrollment in Wilmington has been on the steady decline, essentially, going back as far as 2004, 2005, so over the last 10 years. Back in 2004, 2005, we were at 3,876 students, and as of October 1st of the current year, total enrollment, this is in district as well as students enrolled and out of district placements, 3,513 students. And the projection using the model that we use actually has us continuing that decline. That's important for a reason. That presents somewhat of a challenge to us here in Wilmington Public Schools, because our Chapter 70 funding is driven predominantly by enrollment, and declining enrollment means declining state aid. That's not even to say, to address the issue of the sort of structural deficit that's happening right now at state level. As you know, the governor announced nine C cuts several weeks ago. There's a lot of, I actually was at a presentation today and heard Michael Woodmer of the Mass Taxpayers Foundation say that there's other issues lurking below the surface that may increase the size of that deficit as we go further into the year. So, that's, again, the governor's not able to cut Chapter 70 or local aid without a vote of the legislature, and the legislature doesn't seem inclined to do that. But nonetheless, as we have a new administration come in, and even that administration has made campaign promises about increasing Chapter 70 and local aid, but we may find ourselves with a sustainability issue here as we move forward into the future. Very visually, you can see over the last five years, the enrollment declines that have happened here in Wilmington. And here are some demographic trends. I apologize if that's a little bit small here, but you can see that relatively stable, some of the biggest change, one of the biggest changes that's occurred has been in our low-income population. Five years ago, we had 8.9%. Actually, 2012, 13, that was as high as 10.7%, as we've hopefully come out of the recession. Maybe we're seeing a trend here of that falling. It was 9.4% last year, 2013, 14. We also provided for you some information, and this is in the budget summary as well, on some of our special education population, number of students on IEPs was as high as 628 back in 2010. We're currently at 606 students that are on individualized education programs. And in terms of the percent that are essentially in full inclusion, which means that they spend 80% or more of their school day in the general ed population, in the general ed setting, 63% of our students are in inclusionary settings. We have currently this year 60 students that are placed out of district at various placements. In terms of the profile of our students with disabilities, what we see is that the largest number of our students present with specific learning disabilities. That is a large category of a number of different types of disabilities, and the trend is that that is one of the fastest-growing categories of disabilities. The next highest one for us is communication disorders of disabilities, 129 students. Autism is something that is growing as well. We have 43 students that are, have disabilities in the autism spectrum. This chart shows our 10-year budget history, and you can see the trend line, and for the most part, we've sort of stayed on this trend line that represents approximately a 3.5, 3% to 3.5% increase, sometimes lower, sometimes a little bit higher. But you can see that in the FY '16, this preliminary requested budget is above the trend line slightly, and we'll talk about the numbers in just a minute. Here is the budget detail in terms of the trend. You can see where we've been. Salary budget has ranged from an increase of anywhere from 2.4% to as high as 5.9%. In the preliminary FY '16 budget, this requested salary increases 4.3%. With respect to non-salary, you can see that we've been kind of all over the map. We've had increases as low, actually decreases of 4.8%, increases of 6.3%. The current budget, non-salary request, is 9.9%. You can see that the gap there is about 700, a little over $700,000. We're going to talk more about the detail, but the biggest piece of that is $509,000 worth of special education tuitions that we will own next year, that we will be obligated to pay next year, either students who are, have moved out of district since we passed the FY '15 budget here, adopted the FY '15 budget, or they're students who have moved into Wilmington Public Schools, and due to the move-in law, we will actually be obligated to pay those tuitions starting for next year. So that is an obligation that we own for better or worse. That's a big nut to crack, obviously, in this year's budget, which is driving that 9.9% non-salary increase. You see overall, the percent increase in this preliminary budget is just under 5.5%, 5.49%. And that represents an increase of $1.9 million, 1.909670 is the requested increase. And you can see the distribution across the various schools and locations here. So the major budget drivers, and this captures about 95% of that $1.9 million increase. The largest is contractual salary increases related to collective bargaining agreements. So those are contractual obligations that we have in our collective bargaining agreements. That's $1 million, a little over $1 million. As I mentioned, special education tuition and transportation as well, for students who placed since the adoption of the FY 2015 budget, or moved into Wilmington this year and are placed out of district, and that's $509,870. We've also requested $165,189 for new positions, and these are to address a variety of issues, anything from compliance with students' individual education programs, projected enrollment increases, or significant needs and gaps that we've identified in our instructional program. We also have increased 100, by $122,000 to provide curricular resources and professional development, again, to address some of those significant needs or gaps in our instructional program. And we also have an increase in electricity consumption in regular education and homeless transportation. The increase in electricity consumption is related to this beautiful building that we have opening, which is 40,000 square feet larger than the current building, and also has a whole lot more HVAC equipment due to code requirements around ventilation, far more air exchanges, far more motors and fans, so we expect to consume more electricity in that building. And then with respect to transportation, our three-year contract with North Reading Transportation expires in June of 2015, so we will be rebidding that shortly, and we are anticipating an increase. That's usually sort of a pent-up price increase when you've got a contract that's been at one place for three years, and then you rebid that. You expect that there will be some adjustment to the pricing as we move forward.
Just a quick question, only because you're targeting it, it's the electricity piece. Does that, is that reflective with regards to the proposed 30% hike that taxpayers are that, communities are looking at for utilities? I thought I heard that electricity would be going up an additional 30%. And I just wanted to make sure that that budget is padded for any unexpected increase in utility.
I'll let Paul answer to the specifics, but I will also say that we are a Reading Municipal Light community, so the 30-plus percent are the rate increases that are being submitted by the National Grids and N-Stars.
Oh, okay.
So we are a little bit sheltered from that increase, because we are with Reading Municipal Light Department, and I don't know exactly what you got from them in terms of-
Yeah, we have a slight increase for that, but the majority of the increase is due to the new high school, because it will be more costly from a logistics standpoint.
Okay, so it's not going to be a significant jump.
Right now, we're not-
Nothing in the near future, okay.
Yeah, hoping.
Thank you. Sorry.
Reading Municipal Light Department has historically, has had very competitive prices. We actually benefit greatly from being part of that municipal light district. And I'm not saying that because I wasn't there.
Thank you very much.
Some of the budget priorities that we discussed and we developed as we developed our FY 2016 preliminary budget is providing a strong foundation of early childhood education. We have full-day kindergarten for our students. In terms of preschool, we currently have some substantially separate preschool classrooms, and we also have some inclusion happening in the half-day programs at the preschools, but we do not offer any integrated or fully included full-day program for preschool students, which is a, something that parents have expressed a desire for. It's good for kids. A lot of districts are moving actually to all full-day integrated preschool programs. You're seeing far fewer half-day programs and far greater full-day programs. So this would be adding a full-day integrated program at each one of our- So this would be adding a full-day integrated program at each one of our early childhood centers. Also developing, strengthening, excuse me, the early childhood education, particularly literacy, literacy skill development, and you'll see some funds that we've proposed to address literacy specifically at the early childhood level. We also are looking to provide a strong inclusive learning environment for all students. Again, that's the integrated preschool piece. Another budget priority is to align our pre-K-12 ELA and literacy curriculum to the new Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. That work has, is in process, but we have more work to do to fully align that curriculum to those frameworks, but also implementing the curricular resources that support high-quality instruction, particularly in reading fluency, reading comprehension, and in writing. Another priority is to provide intensive instructional supports at the elementary level to deliver, develop and deliver high-quality differentiated instruction, allowing for strong interventions for our struggling learners, while also allowing us to challenge some of the high-achieving students. We want to implement pre-K-5 curricular resources that support high-quality math instruction that is aligned to the new Massachusetts curriculum frameworks, align our six-eight math curriculum to the new Massachusetts curriculum frameworks, and identify and implement curricular resources that support high-quality instruction in math at that grade level as well. Closing the persistent and growing proficiency gap, which we addressed earlier in the presentation, between the high-needs and the non-high-need students, students, particularly those students with disabilities and those, between, the gap between those students with disabilities and those without disabilities. We want to provide a rigorous, challenging academic experience for all students, both high-achieving and struggling learners, and address the behavioral needs of all students and provide a rich social-emotional learning experience where children learn a common language and strategies that they can use to deal with their emotions, to develop resilience, to handle challenges and conflicts with peers, and to cultivate empathy. And a lot of these are very foundational skills that we especially want to target at the elementary level, because if we get this right in the elementary levels, then clearly as they come up through the grade levels, we've established a very strong foundation and strong resilient kids who are able to really deal with, deal with conflicts and deal with their emotions and deal with stress and anxiety. Another priority is to provide high-quality professional development for teachers to support their professional growth, particularly in areas such as improving formative assessment practices. This is not just about compliance with the state's DDMs through the educator evaluation, but we've, the research is very clear that the formative assessment is key to being able to establish and measure and monitor the progress of students. And so our teachers are, are learning that, and we want to support them in that process. Using data to inform instruction, we have made a significant headway in this area, thanks to the efforts of Dr. Burnham and as well as to Jen White, the data teams, the administrators, and all the teachers who have gotten on board, but we need to continue to provide them with professional development, support them in this work. We need to provide professional development around differentiating instruction for all types of learners. We've had some consultants come in, and they will continue to do their work over the next several months to help us determine what it is that we can do to help our students, our high-need students, our students with disabilities, and clearly differentiating instruction and giving teachers the tools and strategies they need to effectively differentiate instruction for all different types of learners is critical to that effort. And then finally, integrating technology in meaningful and engaging ways, particularly here at this new building, which will be extremely technology-rich. Repeated the budget drivers, just as sort of a reminder, and again, if you look at these numbers and kind of add them up, that's the majority of the one point nine million dollar increase that we see in our budget. So I want to get into some of the specifics that we've asked for, staffing requests, to break that down for you, the numbers that we presented. Again, we talked about the, in the budget drivers, the hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars in new staffing requests, salary requests, and here's what that is comprised of. We have one kindergarten teacher as well as an educational assistant to support kindergarten classes. Those would, right now, the census is showing that we're going to have fifteen, that we have fifteen additional kindergarten students coming in next year, and so that will require an additional classroom. So this would provide the staffing for that classroom. Three, special education assistance. This was related to transition as, as students transition from one school to the other school, to another school, or as they are evaluated, reevaluated, there are modifications, changes made to students' IEPs, which oftentimes will result in additional supports, para-educator, educational assistance supports. And so we have three, the need for three special education assistants to deal with that, that's really a compliance issue. We're also asking for a one point oh pre-K through five literacy instructional specialist. In the research that I've done and certain, the conversations I've had, what I've learned here in Wilmington is that we are, we still continue to struggle with literacy, we still continue to, continue to struggle with aligning our curriculum. We are in the process right now, through Dr. Burnham's work with a literacy team, a literacy committee, evaluating and developing a literacy plan. Once that plan is in place, we are going to need resources to be able to put that plan in action and to really provide that support, that instructional support at that level, pre-K five level, so that teachers can more effectively teach literacy to our students. Again, this is foundational. If we don't set the foundation well in pre-K through five, certainly will be a challenge as they move up through the grade levels. We're requesting a one point oh six point eight math instructional specialist. And there was some conversation, there has been some conversation tonight about what are we doing with middle-school math? And middle school has certainly been tackling this issue. They're looking at math standards, they're looking at, they're starting to align the curriculum. What we feel would be very helpful for math, especially in light of what Mrs. Peters was just saying about the fact that there really is no sort of program out there that is fully aligned. What we'd like to do is hire somebody that is a specialist that can help teachers address the standards and teach these new standards specialized in that, that math area. Our hope would be that this might not be a long-term need. This is a flexible need to address a immediate need that we have right now in the middle school level, and that over time, and I think part of this need probably also comes from the fact that I think it's been a struggle in terms of the coverage of department-level leadership. I know that Mrs. Peters has done yeoman's work to try and address not just nine-twelve, but six-twelve while still being the principal of Wilmington High School, and we certainly thank her for those efforts, but I think having somebody dedicated to that area will really help, and we have identified some performance issues in math at the middle school level. We're requesting one point five reading specialists, and that would be allocated as follows: point five FTE for the North Intermediate School, point five FTE for the West Intermediate School, and point two-five at the Bautwell, and point two-five at the Wildwood. Currently, the North Intermediate and West Intermediate Schools have one reading specialist for the two grade levels. The primary schools, Shawsheen and Wuburn Street, have three reading specialists. At Bautwell and at Wildwood, they each have point five reading specialists currently for pre-K K. We would like to increase the amount to one point five at the two intermediate schools and to point seven-five at Bautwell and at Wildwood to beef up the reading supports at those levels. Particularly the North and the Intermediate, there seems to be a real disparity in terms of three at the primary grade level. They get to fourth, fifth, they still have these strong needs, and yet we drop the reading support down to one person across two grade levels. We're requesting a point-six FTE high school technology integration specialist. In FY fifteen, the current year's budget, we have a point-four position allocated to the budget, knowing that we were going to transition to that school mid-year. We're actually in the process of posting that position, hoping to bring that person onboard as a full-time technology integration specialist sometime in the, the winter as we transition to the new building. If they come on full-time in, say, February, that's only going to be the equivalent of a point-four salary, but obviously, we'd like to retain that person as a full-time technology integration specialist at the high school. So we're requesting an additional thirty-two thousand dollars to allow that to be continued as a full-time position at the high school. There's also a need for a minivan driver, a one point oh minivan driver, again, due to enrollment shifts and increasing transportation needs. The total increase of all these positions, as you can see, is three hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars. But I, what I, I think is important to point out is that we didn't just ask for an increase of three hundred and sixty-four, we looked to what was in the budget and made any shifts and reductions and looked for any savings that we could find with unfilled positions or any other savings we could find in that area. And so we've offset that increase to the tune of two hundred thousand, three hundred and five dollars, which means in the net for all of these positions, the net increase to the budget is a hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. In terms of the non-staffing requests, we have thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars that we've allocated for a foundations program. This, again, is, goes to the literacy gaps that we're talking about. This is a phonemic awareness, phonics program. We don't currently have a program in place. Am I correct in that? And so this would allow us to purchase a program that we will be implementing to address that in the early grade levels. Curriculum and professional development to address those priority areas that I described earlier, curriculum alignment, data-informed instruction, differentiated instruction and technology integration. My understanding, last year, there was the implementation of the FOSS science kits for grades K, three, and five, and that the expectation was that we would fill in the other grade levels in this year, so there's thirty-two thousand in new requests to extend that to grades one, two, and four, so that we would have those kits for grades K through five. Again, this isn't a curriculum, this is science kit material that supports the curriculum being offered. Talked about already the electricity consumption due to the increase in square footage at the high school, and also the increase in regular education and homeless transportation due to our anticipated rate increase when we bid out the new contract, and that's an increase of a hundred and eighty-four thousand. I think it's important to also capture for you all of the things that were requested, but we did not fund in the budget. As it is, as you can imagine, five point five percent is a significant increase, that's a big nut to crack. If we had put all of the non-funded requests into the budget, the increase would have been more like eight point five percent. We knew that wasn't going to be sustainable. But I do think it's important to capture because as part of this budget process, what I asked my administrative team to do is to tell me what you feel you need to make the types of improvements that you want to make based on your school improvement planning process and your own goals and your teachers' goals. So we had a request from both the Shawsheen Elementary School and the Wuburn Street Elementary School to add one point oh special education teacher at each building, and this would really allow them to, to build and develop stronger inclusionary settings for their students. They each have sub-separate programs, they each have inclusion classrooms. We are learning more and more about our inclusion practices. We have some consultants, as I mentioned, working with us to evaluate how we're doing currently with our inclusion practices. We definitely have room for improvement, and we all realize that. I think this is something that we will have to figure out a way to address over time, but hopefully, the report that we get from the consultant will help us to identify how we might be able to do that with, you know, a minimal amount of investment if that's possible. But I do think that to really do inclusion effectively may require some additional resources. And I think there's some education that has to happen in our parent community. We're seeing that all the research indicates, and, you know, there's plenty of it out there, that students who have disabilities are better served in a classroom where they have their peers, their role models are typically progressing students. And that allows them to really have strong models, and the more inclusion opportunities we can provide to those students with disabilities, the better they are likely to be able to develop the skills and access the curriculum. Sub-separate programs don't necessarily provide them with those same learning opportunities, and I think that's something that, that the evidence is pretty clear, and we'd like to move to more inclusion. We will continue to look at how we, we can get there without these resources, but it is an important goal of us, of our district here in Wilmington. There were requests for five additional special education assistance at various schools across the district, again, to facilitate that inclusion, but also to provide tier-two supports to students. When Mrs. Appolito was giving her presentation, talking about RTI, she showed you the tiers, tier-one being what good instruction looks like in all classrooms, tier-three being the more, the, the real intensive services that you see usually as part of special education. Tier-two are those kids who are not referred to special education, can really survive without getting referred to special, can thrive without being referred to special education if they're provided with those intermediate-level supports. And we don't really have a lot of tier-two supports. We don't have tutors here in this district, we don't have those types of, of resources. It's something that I think we will probably be looking at, how we are going to be able to develop, to implement tier-two supports for students absent staffing and resources. Certainly, reading specialists help, if you can go back for a second. Reading specialists will help with that. As you can see, we did ask for some reading specialists in the budget, which hopefully will help with some of those tier-two supports. We talked about a point-two-five reading specialist at Bautwell and a point-two-five at Wildwood that we did include. The original request was actually for a point-five, so that each building would have a full-time. And in an effort to sort of compromise and scale back the increase, we put, we put that at point-seven-five FTE rather than one point oh FTE at each school. I think every little bit helps. Great to have two full-time, one at each building, but certainly it helps to have at least, you know, something more than the point-five that we currently have at each There was a request for a point-five social worker for Wilmington Middle School and a point-five guidance counselor for Wilmington Middle School. There, some of the educational assistance that you saw in the previous slide, the five point oh, were also for the middle school. You heard Mr. Olson talk when he did his school improvement plan, you heard Mr. Olson talk about some of the challenges happening at the middle school, and I think that he and I've had lots of conversations, and we do believe that if we took a strong look at existing staffing and the existing schedule, that we may be able to reallocate and make some shifts that will allow us to address the concerns that are addressed by, you know, that are, that he's seeking to address in proposing these additional positions without necessarily incurring additional costs. So I think that you will see us come back to you sometime in the spring with a proposal for what a, what shifts might happen in the middle school schedule-wise and staffing-wise to allow us to reshuffle and re, to address the priorities at the middle school. There was a request for twenty-five thousand dollars to fund incremental instructional time for the high school, the interdisciplinary block, and this is particularly to provide some additional resources for the, what they call is their W-three block, interdisciplinary block. And what we're going to take a look at, again, is look at, take a look at existing staffing and existing schedules, as well as tack into potentially our community providers and our business organizations to maybe come in and, and help offer some instruction during that time for students as well. Fifteen thousand was requested to provide extended library hours at Wilmington High School. That was not funded. The hope there is that we could solicit volunteers or students to be able to assist us in keeping those hours extended at Wilmington High School. There was thirty-five thousand dollars in additional to the technology budget for more technology, and we are going to do our best to replenish what we can replenish with the existing amount that's currently in the budget and has been in the budget. I guess this budget was about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars last year, just maintain that same level of funding moving forward and not increase it. And there was twenty thousand dollars for new techs for world language and business technology that we also were not able to fund. This is just, again, the overview, just showing you a one point nine million dollar increase, five point four nine percent. And the next step in the process is we will be meeting, Mr. Agirre and I will be meeting with the town manager and assistant town managers to discuss the funding of our operational and capital budgets next week on December sixteenth. We will then refine and revise the budget based on the discussion and available revenues and what we feel is a sustainable budget, do that in late December and mid-January, and we will return to the school committee with a recommended budget, the second meeting in January. That's scheduled for January twenty-eighth. From there, you're all familiar, we would present the school, the school committee budget, once approved, it would become the school committee budget, present that to the finance committee in mid-March, and then the town meeting vote is scheduled for May second, two thousand fifteen, this Saturday is when... second, two thousand and fifteen, this Saturday is when the town meeting is scheduled for. I think that's all.
Thank you. That was very well done. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Do we have any comments, questions? Everybody's too, everybody came and we're like, it was so well done. We don't have any questions or comments. Do we have anything? I would, I would just like to say that having read through the big book, and some of this is very much like the big book, but it's amazing how much you have to do to put together a budget. It's very impressive. It's something that becomes a public record that people could look at, which they usually don't. But it is available at the Roman House after it's all voted on and everything.
And on our website as well.
Oh, and on the website. Oh, good.
It was the first document I looked at when I was exploring the possible position. Imagine that.
Mrs. Burns.
Superintendent.
Yes.
Good question. With regards to the district improvement goals that we've set for ourselves, how does this budget, how does it support those goals? I mean, I'm a little, I mean, I think, I understand the need to non-funded piece, and hopefully have to go back and address that piece at some time, which is a time that I think is our enemy, because we'd like to see that achievement gap, which those aspects could assist us with. How do you, what are your thoughts with regards to, with this proposed budget? What will allow us to accomplish with our goals for the fiscal for two thousand and fifteen, sixteen? I mean, granted, those goals haven't been set yet, but I just, you know, we're midway, almost halfway through the school year. I just, and this might be a little cut before the horse situation, which I'm known for, but I just wanted to get some preliminary thoughts.
The, I mean, I think that the district improvement plan goals, I think that this budget, even though the district improvement plan that we presented to you was for the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen school year, I think that obviously some of those goals are multi-year goals, and some of those goals are really will set the stage for future improvements. The challenge for us as we develop this budget, and, you know, I have to give a lot of credit to the administrators because I engaged them in an exercise that they probably at some level will tell you didn't seem fair. I basically, we, everybody had heard everybody's presentation of the district improvement plan, everybody in their school improvement plans, and everybody saw what everybody was requesting for budgetary resources. And we all came together and said clearly, eight and a half percent's not sustainable. So what are our priorities? And I give them a lot of credit because it was a system discussion. It wasn't, well, you know, I'm in, I'm from Woburn Street School, so I'm an advocate for my resources. It really was, okay, as a system, sorry, I didn't mean to say. He didn't do that. It really was, okay, what do we need to focus on as a district if we're going to, what are our highest needs? And I think that's why you see a lot of focus on early childhood education. Even the realization amongst all principals, all grade levels, about the disparity around reading support at the intermediate school just sort of jumped out off the page. So I think that we, the focus was, here's what we say we want to do in our school district. And obviously, everybody's got a goal in their school improvement plan and district improvement plan at some, in some way around supporting struggling learners. And a lot of what you see here is to support struggling learners, particularly the foundational aspects, particularly the pre-K to five piece of the equation, because if we don't get that right, you know, it's like building, putting a new roof on a building with leaky windows. It just doesn't make sense. So I do feel that it's really well-aligned, even though it's a future year. And I think, you know, in thinking about the budget and putting the budget together for next year, it's obviously difficult because we aren't, you know, we're in sort of, we've got, I've got my foot in two camps. I've got an old strategic plan or, you know, that's coming to winding down, and then I'm going to engage in the process with the community and the school committee of developing a new strategic plan, which essentially will almost start next year. But I think that the things that are being presented here are things that are going to support what we're going to be looking to do. And a lot of it comes from the entry plan process that I've been going through and listening to the community as a whole and what they feel is most important to them as a school district.
Thank you.
And it seems like, because to me, it seems like that we really can see clearly a shift going on here, because for so long, perhaps it was because we were building the new high school, it seemed to be that things were shifted towards the secondary level. And now to hear a lot of this, I was really surprised. It was made very clear that we need to go back to the foundation for the elementary schools. And I don't feel that's been one of our priorities, or strengths, probably too, because they were doing such a good job anyway.
Yeah.
They really were. But it's interesting to step back and say, all right, now we've got that, and we can go into this area. So it's very, I think that's interesting for us.
You're, you know, I think you're going to be providing students with a world-class education at that high school. And if we don't get them there, where they're able to truly access what we're able to provide them in that building, then we will have spent a whole lot of money on something that is not as beneficial as it could be to our students.
Exactly. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you all so much for coming tonight. We really appreciate it. You only have ten more minutes to wait. No. I'm kidding. Feel free to go on your way if you're, if you're ready. I think you may feel the same way, though. It's so nice to feel like we're like a community organized here, doing this together. Yeah, we really appreciate your hard work. Our next item of business would be the middle school principal search process.
You have a memo attached here to a middle school timeline and process, and I just want to kind of take you through our thought process. It's probably hard to believe that here we are in December and we're talking about middle school principal, but it's very important. What you'll find is that with respect to administrator searches, the earlier that you get out there and begin to recruit, the stronger the candidate pool is. I don't know why Julie's over there smiling.
Flashbacks. All I can say is flashbacks.
So I think it's, I do think it's important that we sort of get ahead of the rest of the pack, if you will, when we go out to search for a middle school principal. So the process, we'll start with the screening committee members. What I am proposing here, what I'm putting together is screening committee that consists of representatives from a lot of different constituent groups. We are fortunate now that we have an HR administrator, so Joy will facilitate, be the facilitator for the search. And I've asked Dr. Burnham to also participate on part of the screening committee, twofold. She represents the district as a district administrator, but can also assist Joy in facilitating where Joy is pretty new to her role and to our district. Looking at three different building administrators, and the thought here is an administrator from a building that feeds and, as well as receives the students from the middle school. So an intermediate administrator and a high school administrator, and obviously, we'd want to have somebody representing the middle school as well on that team. We'd look for three middle school teachers, and when I say teachers, I mean professional staff. It doesn't necessarily have to be teachers. It could be guidance counselors, neuro school psychologist. Also, two members of the school's support staff, so that could be educational assistants. It could be secretarial staff. And three representatives from the parent slash community group as well, three, the middle school parent community. So that would be the group. I would participate in all of the screening committee interviews, but I would participate as sort of a fly on the wall, because it's a really important part of the data collection, is to see how they do with the screening committee. And I wouldn't want to not have that opportunity to see how they, how well they interview. But I wouldn't ask questions. I'd sort of be lurking in a corner somewhere. So the plan right now is, you're reviewing this process right now, the week of December twenty-first, we would actually be, actually, I think we're thinking about doing this next week, and even, even a little bit earlier. But posting the position on School Spring, advertising on Monster, the Massachusetts Secondary School Administrators Association, as well as a website that we could post to for this. So that should get us, cast us a very broad net. On December nineteenth, we have a scheduled district leadership team meeting, and as part of that, we will conduct sort of a focus group with administrators, asking them what type of qualities they think are important in the next middle school principal. We will do a similar thing with staff, as well as parents, during the week of January fifth with staff, and the week of January twelfth with parents. We would then host an organ, we would obviously during this time be soliciting volunteers for the screening committee, and we would hold our organizational meeting with the screening committee on January twenty-first. The application deadline would be January twenty-sixth. We would vet the screening, we would vet the candidates, so that we would give to the screening committee, we would, basically, we will prescreen applicants, and if they don't meet minimum requirements around licensure, years of experience, educational background, et cetera, the goal would be to hand to the screening committee, hopefully as many as twelve candidates, twelve highly-qualified candidates for the position. The group, the screening committee will design its own questions, and we base those around the administrator standards and indicators that are in the principal rubric. So we would look to address those standards and those indicators by, the questions would be geared towards those particular standards and indicators. And the committee would have some time to review the applications. They would do that online. The great thing about the program we use, School Spring, is it's all available online, so they don't have to come to the Roman House and scan through paper applications, so they can do that all online. And then we would have candidate interviews on February tenth. And between February eleventh, and the screening committee would then give to this, to me, the superintendent, a list of pre-finalists. Could be anywhere from three to five candidates. I would do some sort of initial vetting, interview those candidates myself, and announce a slate of finalists. Typically, that would be three individuals that would be finalists. They will interview with the central office leadership team, interview with the administrative council, and then we would provide them an opportunity to, to visit, to do a site visit here in Wilmington, which would involve going to the middle school, seeing classrooms, watching them interact with students, provide an opportunity after school for staff to ask questions as part of an open-mic type night or afternoon, and do the same thing in the evening for community members and parents could come and ask questions of the candidates. Depending upon whether or not there are sitting principal, we may also take the step of doing a site visit out to their district as well, if there are a sitting principal. And then we'd conduct a finalist interview, and the goal would be to announce a finalist to the school committee at your March twelfth meeting, execute a contract thereafter. The longest span I've seen for contracts in terms of notice provisions is ninety days. So if we kind of signed a contract by April first, we would have no problem with any anticipated start date of July one. It would also allow for transition time. Mr. Olson and his staff could spend a good amount of time with the candidate, getting them up to speed and making the transition as smooth as possible.
Excellent. Do we have any questions, comments? Bring us back happy memories.
Joy, do you want to help out with a question?
I'm all set. Thank you very much.
So the facilitator knows. Excellent. Thank you. Seems very thorough. Okay, our next item would be the SEEM collaborative agreement.
Yes. The collaborative agreement, before you have a letter here from Kathy Lawson, who is the executive director of SEEM. For those, I think everybody's very familiar with SEEM. SEEM is the collaborative. We use the SEEM collaborative for a number of things. Predominantly, we take advantage of, by collaborating with other school districts, SEEM provides us with placements for our students in the public collaborative special education programs that we individually as a school district could not provide due to the number of students and the expense, but that when we have all the districts participating together, we're able to collaboratively provide some great services and great programs. Besides the agreement, Kathy also sent over for us in the back here is the enrollment data. Wilmington Public Schools, the number of students that are enrolled in each of the various SEEM collaborative schools and programs. So in the current year, FY fourteen, or in FY fourteen, I'm sorry, thirteen students enrolled in the SEEM program. We also, they provide a lot of different services, ABA services, assistive technology consults. And here's some of the service hours that we took advantage of during FY fourteen from SEEM. This doesn't even speak to the various opportunities for professional development that they provide to us as well. A lot of it at no charge whatsoever. It includes things like job-alike groups. I know Dr. Burnham is very involved with the SEEM group of assistant superintendents and curriculum coordinators, and they do a lot of work collaboratively. They're working this year collaboratively, I think, on social studies, curriculum alignment. So this is really great model of collaboration and partnership. So the need for the agreement comes from legislation that was passed in response to the state auditor inspector general reports about malfeasance and fiscal mismanagement related to the Meramec Special Education Collaborative. And so it, they caused a, quite a ruckus, and new legislation was passed with a whole different set of requirements. And it really makes collaboratives treat, be treated far more like public school districts, which I think is something that, that level of accountability and transparency, I think, is really important. And so all the components of the agreement are legally required, and everything that's in here is in accordance with the statute. All the things that you see in there, like a mission and a purpose, and financial terms and conditions of membership, and procedures for preparing a budget, those were all statutorily defined items that had to be part of this agreement. And so SEEM has done a great job of putting this agreement together. So it does require a vote of each school committee for each of the participating SEEM communities.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? No, that's okay. I entertain a motion to approve the SEEM collaborative agreement. Mrs. Burns, so moved. In a second, Mr. Rosat. Allohs in favor? Unanimous, Kim. Thank you.
I'm assuming that the next item, you want to defer till the next meeting, as it contains the one hundred and eighty-three thousand for the Envisions math program?
Yes. That would be good. Thank you.
Public comment.
Thank you. So we're all set.
Public comments.
Public comment. I'm not going to ask why you're still here. Okay. They didn't have a public comment.
It's all about the support.
They're supporting.
Oh, oh, that's very, thanks. Thank you for staying. That's very nice of you.
Or they want something. I don't know.
Why didn't you vote on that? I want to explain that, too, a little more. I should, while we have public comments, I'll make a public comment. Two members are missing tonight, and so usually we try to make sure that we take a vote on something as important as that, a new change like that with the curriculum and the textbooks, et cetera, so that everybody has a chance to weigh in on it. And we want it to be supported a hundred percent. So that's one reason. And the other reason is, we do that, and I feel, I probably never told you that, Superintendent Delai, that for anything that's money, we wait a week. We bring it up at the first meeting, and then we wait until the next meeting to vote on it.
Chew on it.
So we chew on it. We've always done that. So for those two reasons, we didn't vote tonight. But I'm sure it'll be, we'll be happy in two weeks, or three, whatever it is to a next meeting.
A month.
It's a month.
Because of the holiday.
But we, they wouldn't be taking books anyway. They wouldn't be buying them now anyway, I don't think.
Oh, no.
No, so we're all set. All right. And we have no public comments. Other reports. No other reports. We are working on.
The handbook?
The handbook. We are working on the handbook. We have one first section finished.
Do the correspondence go out?
It's coming in a second.
Oh, forgive me.
Yep. Oh, do you have a correspondence also?
No, no.
Okay. Other reports. So our next item is correspondence.
All right. I have two. We received a letter from Senator Warren. Dear friend, thank you for contacting me about mental health services in schools. I believe strongly that young people should have meaningful access to essential mental health resources. The U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Office of Adolescent Health reports that less than half of the adolescents who need mental health care receive treatment. Children with mental health issues often demonstrate lower academic achievement and are more likely.
are more likely to miss class, drop out of school at higher rates, and are at a greater risk of suicide. Providing these students with services they need to succeed in school can help promote a safer, more productive learning environment for all students. We know that identifying and treating mental health issues early can mitigate their harmful effects and increases the likelihood that young people with these disorders will excel in school and enter adulthood with positive mental health. That is why I am proud to be a cosponsor of a bill introduced by my colleague, Senator Al Franken. He's a Democrat from Michigan, thank you.
Minnesota.
Minnesota, thank you. The Mental Health in Schools Act. This legislation would provide funding and support to schools that work in partnership with community-based mental health organizations to provide mental health services to students. I am pleased that the goals of this bill have also been incorporated into another bill introduced by Senator Tom Harkin, he's a Democrat from Iowa, the Mental Health Awareness and Improvement Act. I will be sure to keep your thoughts in mind as I continue to work with my colleagues on this important issue. Sincerely, Elizabeth Warren. And we also received correspondence from Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They were doing a mid-cycle review on our district. They came up with one little point that we had in our district that was partially implemented, and I am pleased to announce that it's already been addressed.
Excellent. Thank you.
So there we go.
Yes. Mrs. Bruski.
The letter that we were, I didn't know if you were going to speak to that piece.
The welcome school committee letter. It did get.
It did go out.
It did go out, yes.
Okay. I did, oh, I just didn't know. I didn't, I just wasn't sure.
I know. I didn't get a copy either, because then we thought afterwards, I thought afterwards, were we just keeping it within? But I guess that's fine.
We, we had posted it on our website, and we sent it out via Connect5 to all parents in the district. We did add you, but subsequent to that going out, we should add you as well, I suppose.
That's all right. That's fine. I think one came to my house, but yeah, that's fine. Thank you. Thank you. Our future meeting dates and agenda items, so January 14th will be our next meeting, and we'll definitely take a vote on the math curriculum, math, we're not calling it.
Capital plan and the math program.
Capital plan and the math program. Okay. And if you find anything comes up, let us know. Happy holidays to everybody. It'll be a while till we meet again.
Maybe next, we'll go to the math meeting next week.
Yes, if people can get to the math meeting. I think it's important for us to know from the, coming from pre-K all the way to high school. I think that would be important, so when the next thing comes up, we'll have the background that we need. And Dr. Burnham?
I just want to remind everybody that a math specialist from the Department of Ed will be present for that presentation.
Oh, good. Wonderful. Excellent. That's, that's even better. That's great.
Right from the horse's mouth, that's what.
Yes, exactly.
Not just from me.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Rusad?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
In a second. Mrs. Bonish. Allohs in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.